This meeting of the Rolling Meadows City Council is hereby called to order. Would everyone please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Clerk will please call the roll.
Cannon.
Here.
Prina.
Here.
Majikis.
Here.
Judd.
Here.
Baner.
Here.
Diestis.
Present.
Limas.
Present.
With seven present and none absent, we do have a quorum present this evening. And I believe that's really only because the next Hawks game is tomorrow night. I believe a gentleman farther down the row and the lady to my right and a guy in the camera room probably wouldn't be here tonight otherwise. Therefore, since we do have a quorum, members of the audience are reminded that these proceedings are being videotaped for current and future broadcast over the city's cable television channel. The first item on the agenda this evening is a motion to approve two sets of minutes, one from the May 19 Committee of the Whole Meeting and one from the May 26 City Council Meeting. The Chair therefore asks unanimous consent to consider both sets of minutes in one motion. Is there any objection? Seeing none, it would be in order for a motion to approve both sets of minutes. Mr. Prina has made the motion and it has been seconded. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to either set of minutes? Mr. Diestis.
Can I abstain since I wasn't here for either one of them?
Well, you may do what you wish.
Okay.
And I do understand that lots of places where people go, they feel if they were not at the meeting, they are not entitled to vote on minutes. However, it is actually proper for them to vote on minutes. And if you do choose to abstain, it goes the way any other abstention does, your vote will be counted on the prevailing side. So I do understand lots of people think that way, but as a parliamentary guy, I can tell you, that's actually not the appropriate way to go about when somebody's absent.
Okay. Thanks.
So you're free to do what you wish based on that advice. Is that a sufficient answer?
Absolutely.
Further additions, deletions, or corrections to either set of minutes? Then seeing none, the question is, all those in favor of approving both sets of minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it and both sets of minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda is a motion to deviate. And I do realize that on the agenda, it cryptically just says IDOT award. Well, to be a little bit more specific, we have a young gentleman and his dad who are here to get an award that I have not had the privilege of presenting before on behalf of the city of Rolling Meadows. It's called Saved By The Belt. And if you're interested in deviating for that purpose, you'll learn a whole lot more about it. Therefore, is there a motion to deviate for that purpose? Mr. Baner with a smile has made the motion and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it and the council will deviate from its usual agenda for that specific purpose. So I'm gonna grab the walking, talking microphone. And I'm gonna ask Matthew and Tim Winkelman to come forward, please. And also Chief Scanlon is gonna join me up in the front because it really is a nomination from a police department that gets this award to come in full swing. So if you guys wanna come up here and stand facing everybody out there so they can see your shining face as you get the award here. I know the camera at some point is supposed to be able to zoom in on a picture that might illustrate what we're talking about here. But the Illinois Department of Transportation created an award called Saved By The Belt. And basically, it's a recognition for the intelligence of people who were properly buckled up when they went out onto the roads. And there's a few criteria that have to be met for this award. And these two, I guess I can say, were lucky enough to meet the criteria because it's pretty lucky if you can take a look at some of the scenes from this accident that happened out on Kirchhoff. Living kind of sort of a block and a half away, I remember seeing the aftermath of this and wondering what the heck happened. And basically, this was an accident that was serious enough to cause some serious injury to people who were in the vehicles. And we're happy to say that Matthew and Tim both came out of this just fine because they were smart enough to be wearing their seatbelt. As part of the criteria, it says that it has to be a crash where serious injury could have resulted. So this isn't given for just any fender bender. And if you take a look at these pictures, this was not. It says that there can be no circumstances involving any kind of negligence on the part of the driver. And for Tim, that was clearly not the case. For the other driver, it clearly was, unfortunately. I believe since there are multiple lawyers in the room, I should probably add the word allegedly when I say that. But the driver of the other vehicle was driving under conditions under which they should never have gotten behind the wheel. And I think all of us need to remember that when we think about IDOT's buckle up for safety campaigns, that we're not really supposed to trust our own driving enough to go, I don't need to wear a seatbelt. We should be worried enough about the driving of other people to put on our seatbelts. And so they've created an award called Saved By The Belt that simply recognizes people who have the smarts to have their seatbelt on in a condition where it's clearly proven that if they didn't have the belt on and if they weren't that smart, they might not be standing in front of us in the condition that they are today. So first of all, we have these certificates right here. One for Matthew. And, oh, good. And Chief, thank you. And one for Tim. And those are pretty neat. And as a matter of fact, I got a little bit fooled. We have a great volunteer here in the city who has been a member of a number of our volunteer committees, whose name is Jeff Huck. And I thought I saw his name on these certificates, but the fellow who's in charge of the program for IDOT, his name is Jeff Heck. And so it just kinda fooled me. But, you know, those are kinda nice. But also with it are a couple boxes. And if you wouldn't mind me letting you show everybody of all the different awards that we've given out up here of different kinds to the finance department for their CAFR reporting. It looks like a little plaque. Sometimes we've had ones that look like they're made out of glass or crystal or whatever else. But Chief, if you could hold this mic for me? Oh, yeah, let's do it that way. Good for you. Take a look at this little medallion that's given. It feels like it weighs about a pound. And there are two of them here. I forgot the trick to opening it up. Would you do that for me, Chief? These are just about the neatest things that I've seen come presented as awards of anything that we've given out here in the city council. So each of these nice wooden boxes with this nice hefty medallion from the Illinois Department of Transportation is yours because you've given them a great example of why people should be buckling up as they ask us to. So first of all, would you help me congratulate these two gentlemen on their fine award? And Matthew says he's gonna let his dad do the talking.
I'd like to say thank you for all the hard work the police department and the fire department did that night. And since then, there's been a lot of activity. And it's been six months, the next couple of days. So it's taken time to heal, but we're very happy with how things have come this far. We've lived in this town for 12 years and we take this road every day, wherever we go. So it was just a normal going to the gas station, you know, it's everything we do, the same route. And just so happened that night changed everything. But that second we took to put our seatbelts on, it would've been so much different if we didn't. And that one second changed, you know, for the better. And I appreciate everything that they've done for us. We gladly accept the award.
We're very glad you're able to accept the award. So here we go, Matthew, take that top one for me. There you go. And Tim, there you go. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Having deviated for a special purpose, the council now returns to its usual purposes. The next item would be the reports. And under the mayor's report, I have no report this evening. Are there award reports? Mr. Prina, the second word.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanna follow up because I've had a busy couple of weeks. They're finishing up the construction that was on Adam Street for Water Main and we had some residents questioning what goes next because Wilson, Vermont, I followed up with Fred, and they are working on fixing up the, completing that project in the next week or so. Also, I had some calls from some residents concerning Benton, which is, we have approved. And I'm told that the contractor will be making the decision on where that goes forward. And I just thank Public Works for their efforts in answering those questions. And also, I'm thinking there should be some type of award for Public Works this week because I got calls from a couple of moms and dads that their little sons were on the street and Public Works stopped and beeped the horn on one of their big trucks and they were very, very happy. So thank you, Public Works.
I've seen that happen. Mr. Diestis, the sixth word.
Thank you. This week, I had a resident contact me about a vacant home in the ward. And Valerie and I have had several conversations and Jim and I have had several conversations. And I'm hoping that we can bring this issue back up again at the July Committee of the Whole Meeting to come to some conclusion on what we can possibly do with vacant homes in our city. This one has been particularly troublesome, both to the neighbors and to staff. And I know they've all, they are doing and have done all they can do. The city attorney is working on trying to do what he can do from a legal standpoint, but I think we just need to keep hammering at this thing until we get some kind of ordinances down on what the city is going to do legally, what we can do with vacant homes. For the time being, we're just going to be mowing the lawn to try to keep it looking in check. But we've gotta be able to do more with this than just mow the lawn. So I just want the resident to know.
I believe a request for the July Committee of the Whole Meeting is a perfectly proper request and is well taken in this particular case. Mr. Crumstock, is that something we can accommodate? And then Mr. Diestis, that will be placed on the July Committee of the Whole Agenda.
Okay. And then one other thing, I know later in the meeting, there'll be a mention of items that'll be coming up that are June Committee of the Whole.
Correct.
And one of the items is a discussion on Firehouse. And I had several residents ask me to mention it when we're gonna be talking about it again. So for those residents who have asked me, we'll be talking about the Firehouse at the June 16 Committee of the Whole Meeting, just in case you're not around later in the evening when we talk about what's on the agenda. So I'm telling you now, heads up.
Duly noted.
Go Hawks. Did I say that out loud?
It would be okay if you said that out loud. Are there further award reports this evening? Then seeing none, the council meeting is now open to members of the audience for up to 20 minutes to address the city council on matters that are on the agenda or regarding other issues. We ask that persons wishing to address the city council keep their comments to five minutes in length. Comments must be addressed to the council as a whole through the mayor and profanity may not be used in any form. There are three signatories on the sign-in sheet this evening. The first of those is Mr. Richard Nathan. Mr. Nathan, the microphone is yours for up to five minutes, sir. And might I say, welcome back to the podium.
Thank you. May I use the?
Please, if you wish. Yes.
Okay, Mayor Rooney, aldermen, and city staff, I appreciate the opportunity to address you once again this evening. As you will recall from my presentation at the last meeting, I'm the CEO and principal shareholder of RTC, a 21-year resident of Rolling Meadows. I'm here to provide a follow-up to my statement at this group two weeks ago and to the letter of June 3 delivered to you last week. Mayor Rooney, I want to thank you for your cordial comments about RTC that you made at the last council session. I expected as a result of the initial receptivity that the process of working with the city would be welcoming and transparent. Sadly, this has not proven to be the case, which I will detail now. Because we've been unable to learn very much about either the TIF or the zoning requests, our attorney sent a Freedom of Information Act request to the city. When our attorney called the city manager and development director to seek information about what was on the agenda for tonight's city council meeting, they received a letter from your city attorney stating that all communications with regard to the Gallagher TIF and rezoning would need to be made to him with no further contact with the city allowed. My understanding is that it is unusual for a municipal attorney to make this request when an attorney is seeking public information on a public matter that is on a public agenda. But it is the next sentence of the letter that is even more surprising. The letter advised that the city attorney directed city staff not to speak with me. The cordial process that I thought we were beginning two weeks ago was clearly anything but, at least is directed from the city attorney to me. This was confirmed after I dropped off at City Hall the letter you should have received from me last week. Seeking to learn to whom legal notices to RTC have been addressed, a rather reasonable request, especially as neither myself nor anyone else at a managerial level at RTC knew whether we had received any of the notices provided in this matter, I was directed to the community development desk. After explaining my purpose and answering a few questions, the pleasant woman asked me to wait while she sought more feedback from Valerie Danner. A minute or so passed before the same woman returned to tell me that the city still was not authorized to speak with me. I certainly hope that we are not in an adversarial situation. I will restate RTC's position, a position I am advised is also shared by Jerry Crawford, the owner of our mirror facility in the Meadows Corporate Center. We are not necessarily against the formation of the TIF district. In fact, to further the comments I made two weeks ago, RTC welcomes Gallagher to our complex. A vibrant complex is great for this area. We have long hoped we would see this business community once again as strong and vital. But we do want these decisions to be delayed so that a fully inclusive process can be started to consider eligibility for the other properties in our complex. That there was no overt attempt to bring RTC and Jerry Crawford and his 2900 Gulf Road building into the dialogue as concerning at best. Our properties will be highly impacted by what happens with the Gallagher development. More importantly, a complex built as a planned development, more or less at the same time approximately 40 years ago, has more or less the same needs. We think it odd that the 21-year taxpayer with far fewer financial resources than the publicly traded newcomer is excluded from the project, including an attempt to lock us out of information and the right to discuss it further in advance of the vote to formally approve it. Mirroring my point of view in the TIF, how is it that important zoning and engineering matters that will clearly impact RTC's property rights have not been openly reviewed with us? Here's what Gallagher has provided to Rolling Meadows as final engineering plans for their corporate headquarters. First, a drawing that just demonstrates that we took this from the information we got from the Freedom of Information Act, from a document entitled Final Engineering Plans for Gallagher Corporate Headquarters. In that deck of drawings, there is a redrawn entry structure for the complex. RTC's building is here on the right. Jerry Crawford's building, 2900 Gulf Road, is here on the left. Our current roadway curls around and comes through this way and continues all the way through the length of our building. Half of that roadway is now gone. It's been wiped out in the final engineering drawings. More importantly perhaps, this beautiful grassy median that is a real pride of our property and really creates a stunning way to approach our building and to be a resident of our building, is now intersected with a roadway that cuts right through it. And this drawing shows how we lose half of our driveway where, interestingly enough, RTC had already developed preliminary plans, let's see if I can orient myself, to add parking in the area where we will no longer have a driveway to even access the parking spots that of course are not approved yet, but that we were petitioning, we would end up petitioning to add to our property. Thank you for allowing me that little show and tell. Importantly, the parcel of land that Gallagher has unilaterally decided will become a two-lane roadway instead of a beautiful grassy lawn, and this is terribly important, is actually 25% owned by RTC. As supportive of having Gallagher join our community as I am, I cannot accept their approach to unilaterally changing the complex in which we operate. I would have expected more as well from Rolling Meadows. When there is apparent opacity of process, no clear attempt to create an open dialogue on important long-term impacts to property rights, one begins to wonder about intent. It is not my intention, however, to sour RTC's relationship with the city or to create a public relations problem. My preference instead is for you to defer your vote on the TIF district and changes to the Meadows planned development until all impacted parties can be made part of an inclusive process that will fully respect our valued property and tenancy rights. Respectfully, we ask city council to defer the formation of the TIF district as it currently is structured, to encourage city staff and Gallagher to schedule meetings to review their plans for our complex with all impacted parties and to ensure that all property rights are respected.
Thank you for taking the time to present your case, sir.
Any questions or is that not appropriate?
Well, no, sir. With public comment, it's more like somebody making a speech to the House of Representatives.
That's fine.
And so it's not a question and answer time.
I understand. Sure. Thank you.
The second person on the sign-in sheet this evening is Mr. Bill Amundson. Mr. Amundson is also a previous visitor to the podium. So Mr. Amundson, I also welcome you back to the podium. The podium is yours for a time not to exceed five minutes, sir. Don't worry, I won't start it again, Bill.
We hear about a couple properties. One is the Dominics property. Is there anything that's been planned for that building in any way?
Well, again, it's not really meant for question and answer format.
You can't answer that.
But, no, no, I can. But the usual way would be to ascertain that before. In general, the Clark Street development was in to speak with the city manager about a week ago, and they are planning on coming to which of our?
Either July or August, but they are coming back soon.
Okay. So the July or August Committee of the Whole Meetings, they're planning on coming back with their latest report on what's moving. I do know that as a part of that meeting, they expressed their desire to still get something going by the end of the year, but as of yet, they don't have firm enough plans. They expect them to be firm enough next month's meeting or the month after that.
Well, they certainly have owned that property long enough to have done something about it. And I think, you know, people have gotten inside and stripped the brass or the copper out of it and the longer it stands there, the worse condition it gets in. And I think if they don't do something, soon we should require them to remove the building and at least landscape it so that it looks a little better than it does now. It's a disgrace. And I think Clark Street Partners are using it just as a tax write-off because they got that property pretty cheap. They bought it out of foreclosure. Another thing is this fenced-in carport next to the fire station at Meadow and Kirchhoff. What's happened to that? Is that gonna stand there like that or have they run out of money or what happened?
Well, trying not to go back and forward between microphones. There has been a dispute between the gentleman who owns it and his contractor about, on one side says damage was done by the contractor to the building and on the other side, the contractor says that wasn't me and I didn't do it. And so they agreed to part ways. And so the owner has been in the process of finding another contractor. I believe he has just retained another contractor, is that right?
That's our understanding.
So hopefully, we'll be seeing movement like we were seeing before the owner-contractor arrangement kind of fell apart.
Finally, I'm really disappointed that that bowling alley building was torn down. The shape and the size of that building was perfect for something like a Golden Corral. They had ample parking for a Golden Corral. This city could use something in that order. We could use a nice restaurant downtown and Golden Corral is probably the best place in the world because my wife and I, every time we saw one, we stopped in it whether we were hungry or not. It bothers me that we're taking so much of our commercial property and turning it into residential. Now, behind the bank, that was commercial property. At Salt Creek, that was commercial property. Next to Fratello's, that was commercial property. This is not a bedroom community. We have to rely on business to bring the tax money and the revenue into this city. And residential costs the city money. It is not a money-making proposition. When my wife and I moved into this town in 1960, if we worked in town, we didn't even have to have an automobile. We had a Junior Marshall Field, we had an Ace Bakery, drugstore, we had the Jewel, we had, I can't think of the name of the food store across the street, escapes me. We had a barber, we had the theater, we had the bowling alley, we had everything we needed. Now, we have one shopping center here and God help us if you people decide to take that and turn it into residential. We all have to go over to Algonquin Road or out of town. So I'm disappointed about the bowling alley, but I hope something's done soon with Dominics and with the carport.
We can definitely join you in that hope, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, we all do as well. Thank you for taking the time to express your thoughts this evening. The third person on the sign-in sheet is Mr. Matt Norton, also about the Gulf Road Meadows PUD. So Mr. Norton?
Mr. Mayor, I have nothing to add to Mr. Nathan's comments.
Fair enough. Then we thank you for taking the time to at least come out this evening. Those are all the people who are on the sign-in sheet this evening. Therefore, the public comment portion of the meeting is now closed and the council can return to its usual agenda. The usual agenda would contain all items that are in for second reading, but as at the last meeting, there were no items in for first reading, the logical conclusion is that there are no items in for second reading this evening either. Therefore, there are six ordinances in for first reading and three of them do qualify for a consent agenda. They are items A, B, and C. Would any alderman like A, B, or C remove from the consent agenda for ordinances those three items? Seeing none, then, the Chair asks for a motion to approve all, excuse me, to forward all three ordinances to second reading on one motion. Mr. Baner has made the motion and it has been seconded. The question is, shall all three of these ordinances be moved forward by the clerk for second reading? Item A would grant permission to Lexington Homes on the site of the former bowling alley on Kirchhoff Road that Mr. Amundson just spoke about, to place a sign on their strip of landscaping just off the bike path. Item B would increase the number of Class A2 liquor licenses by one to accommodate the proposed Bulldog Ale House at the site of the former Chili's Restaurant on Gulf Road. And item C would allow a replacement Class A2 liquor license for the new owners of the Chef Ping Restaurant and Algonquin Road. Again, the question is, shall all three ordinances be forwarded by the clerk for second reading? The clerk will please call the roll.
Prina.
Yes.
Majikis.
Yes.
Judd.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
Diestis.
Yes.
Limas.
Yes.
Cannon.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the clerk will please move all three of those ordinances forward for second reading. Under the ordinances that do not qualify for the consent agenda, the council first considers item D. This ordinance, if adopted, would allow a freestanding parking garage and other site and building modifications for the property located at 2850 Gulf Road. In addition to permission for the parking structure, the ordinance would provide some relief from standard stormwater requirements, variations to parking space dimensions, as well as approval of a landscaping. dimensions, as well as approval of a landscaping replacement plan. The Plan Commission considered this request and has recommended approval. Is there a motion to move this ordinance forward for second reading? Mr. Baner has made the motion, and it has been seconded. Under discussion, the chair will take the liberty of going first for discussion purposes. I hope that Mr. Nathan's comments are reflected in the way the council is choosing to handle its agenda. I believe that the point is well taken, that with concerns between the neighbors, that perhaps a little bit of time for discussion to happen between them would definitely be in order. And so I hope that the way that the staff has chosen to structure the agenda will be seen as a compromise that shows respects to both sides. There are at least three items, and perhaps depending on how things turn out, maybe even four, that will have to be considered by the council. And only the one item that really doesn't impinge on any of the concerns that were raised during the public comment portion of the meeting is the only one that was brought forward this evening. The intention is simply to be that, recognize on the one hand that time should be allowed for discussion, but on the other hand, recognize there's a person with a project or a company with a project, and, and not have to hold all of the items, but allow one to go through to, to keep some momentum going, especially since it's the one item that, that doesn't impinge on any of the concerns that came before. So I hope the respect for both sides, that's the spirit of that way of going about our agenda, might be something that could allay the concerns, that there aren't three items on tonight's agenda, there's a single one. I would also, though, take, take the liberty of, of just adding a piece of information that I think might be helpful. I do believe Mr. Nathan's point about disappointment about the way the relationship seems to have turned, that is a very well-taken point, and, and I say that because I share it. Two weeks ago tonight, we were in my office, I agree with Mr. Nathan, I, I feel that we had a, a very amicable discussion, I believe we left on a note of, I don't think there's anything here that can't be talked through, and then slightly more than 48 hours later, there was a message relayed from the attorney who was there that night that a legal action was being prepared against the city. Mr. Nathan is correct that it is unusual for somebody like Mr. McCall to ask people not to speak to folks, but it's pretty standard legal fare that when somebody says they're preparing an action against you, lawyers do say, "Okay, then I don't want you to, to talk anymore." And so I, I share the concern that things seem to spiral in different ways. I don't know what could have possibly happened within a 48-hour period, but I got a call on Friday saying that an action, an unspecified action was being taken, and so I don't believe that Mr. McCall's request of the staff was quite as unreasonable as it may have sounded earlier in the evening. Those are my comments. Are there further discussion on the ordinance? Mr. Prina?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to, I did receive your letter, I have read through it, I thank you for your presentation tonight. This project has been going on for a while, and I just, as the mayor has expressed, I hope that we can work together. I, you brought up some questions tonight that I'll be addressing to staff, because staff has helped me tremendously as I've tried to understand what we need to do to go forward on this, and it is the best interest in Rolling Meadows if we can make everyone happy or make the project go forward so that everyone has a positive effect from it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Agreed, sir. Further comments on the ordinance? Mr. Judd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I had a question about the water issue with, that I addressed with, with Barry.
Yes, sir.
And he directed me to the indemnification clause, and I think, you know, as long as that piece holds in place the way it is, I think that it's okay to make, it makes sense to me, but if the indemnification clause would go or change in any way, shape, or form, you know, I'd like for us to be notified so we can, so I would change my vote. I mean, I'll, I'll support this because of the indemnification clause, but if that changes, then I'm out. So, thank you.
Understood. That type of signaling of intentions is always appreciated, and I thank you for doing so. Further discussion of the ordinance? Seeing no further discussion, the question is, shall the clerk move this ordinance forward for second reading? The clerk will please call the roll.
Majikis?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Biancher?
Yes.
Diestis?
Yes.
Veenbos?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Prina?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the clerk will please move this item forward for second reading. The next item in for first reading is item E. This ordinance, if adopted, would redraw the boundaries of the Illinois Route 53 Expressway Sign Overlay District to include the property located in 1835 to 1951 Rowing Road. The petitioner has requested that the property be included in the overlay district to allow the placement of a double-sided LED billboard. Is there a motion to move this ordinance forward for second reading? Mr. Baner has made the motion, and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Judd?
No real discussion, I just, I just want to make a statement that, you know, my vote for this is not necessarily indicative of how I would vote for the actual sign, I just think this is, you know, I have some conversations with Ms. Danner about the concept, and originally it was both east and west side, and then the east kind of disappeared from the picture, and now we're, there's still potential within like a few feet for another sign, so I, I think that we should be looking not necessarily to be making this, but going for, either bring it back to the east side and put the two in, or don't do either, but that's not necessarily indicative of how I'd ever vote for the sign. So, I, I won't be supporting this for that specific reason, but it has nothing to do with, like I said, the sign itself, it has more to do with, I think that we figured it out, it was 697 feet out of 700 that we could put another sign, so I, you know, I think it's kind of difficult to say to somebody, "We're not going to give you a, you know, .05% variance," but that's just my opinion, so I, that's why I won't be supporting. Thank you.
So noted. Further discussion of the ordinance? Seeing none, the question is, shall the clerk move this ordinance forward for second reading? The clerk will please call the roll.
Judd?
No.
Biancher?
Yes.
Diestis?
No.
Veenbos?
Yes.
Cannon?
No.
Prina?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
With four in favor and three opposed, the clerk will please move this item forward for second reading. The final ordinance in for first reading this evening is item F. This ordinance, if adopted, would commit the city of Rolling Meadows to require anyone doing work for the city to conform with what the state calls prevailing wages. The chair hopes that there won't be, but is there a motion to move this ordinance forward for second reading? Is there a motion to move the ordinance forward? Is there a motion to move the ordinance forward? Having asked three times and hearing no motion, this ordinance dies for lack of a motion. That concludes all the items that are in for ordinance, the ordinance portion of tonight's meeting, bringing the council to the warrant, the document that releases all the funds for the obligations of the city incurred from May 20th through June 2nd. The amount for approval is nearly $1.6 million, roughly 60% of which is related to the payroll. Is there a motion to approve the warrant as prepared by the Finance Department? Mrs. Majikis has made the motion, and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the warrant be approved? The clerk will please call the roll.
Biancher?
Yes.
Diestis?
Yes.
Veenbos?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Prina?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the warrant is approved. That brings the council to the consent agenda for resolutions. There are four resolutions on the consent agenda, items H through L. Would any alderman like any of those items removed from the consent agenda? Mr. Cannon?
H.
Item H is removed. Would any alderman like any other items removed?
J.
J has also been removed. H and J removed, further removals? Then seeing none, that leaves only two, items I and K, therefore the chair asks unanimous consent to consider both resolutions in one vote. Is there any objection? Then seeing none, it is so ordered that it would be in order for a motion to approve items I and K in one vote. Is there such a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Diestis has made the motion, and it has been seconded. Item I would accept a $48,000 sub-grant award from the Cook County Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management's Justice Assistance Grant to supplement police patrols, and item K would accept the bid of Healy Asphalt Company of Mount Prospect, Illinois, to supply asphalt to the city this year, up to the $50,000 amount in the current budget. Again, the question is, shall both of those resolutions be adopted? The clerk will please call the roll.
Diestis?
Yes.
Veenbos?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Prina?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Biancher?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, both of those resolutions are adopted. The council then returns to item H. This resolution, if adopted, would waive the bidding process and approve a $24,000 contract with Corrective Asphalt Materials LLC of South Roxana, Illinois, to supply and apply pavement rejuvenator to various street surfaces around the city. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Diestis has made the motion, and it has been seconded. Mr. Cannon, you asked that this item be polled, you're entitled to first comment, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, as I stated last year, I'm for this product in general, but I don't like the way we do it, so I won't be supporting it tonight.
So noted. Further discussion of the resolution? Then seeing none, the question is, shall the resolution be adopted? The clerk will please call the roll.
Veenbos?
Yes.
Cannon?
No.
Prina?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Biancher?
Yes.
Diestis?
Yes.
With six in favor and one opposed, this resolution is adopted. The final item in under resolutions this evening is item J. This resolution, if adopted, would approve an amendment to both the local agency agreement and the cost-sharing agreement for the preliminary engineering being conducted for the proposed extension of the bike path from Kirchhoff Road to the library. The intricacies of the project call for an additional $19,000 over the budgeted amount, of which the city's share would be nearly $4,000. The city's share would be paid for from the local road fund. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution? Mrs. Majikis has made the motion, and it has been seconded. Mr. Judd, you asked that this item be polled, you're entitled to first comment, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All I have is I've been opposed to this from day one, so I won't support. Thank you.
So noted. Further discussion of the resolution? Then seeing none, the question is, shall the resolution be adopted? The clerk will please call the roll.
Cannon?
No.
Prina?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Judd?
No.
Biancher?
Yes.
Diestis?
No.
Veenbos?
Yes.
With four in favor and three opposed, the resolution is adopted. That concludes all the items that are in under the resolution portion of tonight's agenda. Under other business and reports, I have no appointments nor proclamations this evening. However, there will be at least one appointment at the next meeting to the Capitol Approvements Committee, and I hope to have another appointment at that time as well. Under city clerk's report, does the city clerk have a report?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Then Mr. Crumstock will go to city staff reports, and that usually starts with you for community items of interest.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Obviously, we have a, it's June, so another long items of interest, and we have a few items to add. Just a reminder that the city sprinkler ban did begin on May 15th to conserve water throughout the community. Lawn sprinkling is prohibited between noon and 6:00 p.m., and just as a heads up, at a future cowl, we will be talking about new IDNR rules that we have to accept and future ordinance, but that will be coming at a later date. Meadows Cruise Nights are back thanks to Meadows Christian Fellowship located at 2401 Kirchhoff Road. The cruisers are around from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Fridays until Friday, September 4th. Please join the family fun. If you missed the Saturday, May 23rd Farmers and Food Market Event, the next scheduled Saturday one is June 27th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at City Hall. Additional Saturday dates are actually for 2015 are July 25th, August 22nd, and September 26th. New for 2015, we do have a Friday evening date, and that's June 19th from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m., and that's at the Community Church Parking Lot at 2720 Kirchhoff Road. We'll get back to that date, but again, June 19th, we will also be having a block party, the residents right by Kirchhoff Road between Meadows and Oriole, that will be actually blocked off, but those residents close to that area have been receiving letters from the Police Department that talk about the shutdown of that road for the June 19th event. Vehicle stickers are on sale. Reminder, the 2015-2016 vehicle stickers must be displayed by June 30th. Friday, June 12th is the last official day of school for the 2014-2015 school year at the school district. Please do not pass when the arm is out on the school buses. And the other part is June 12th and June 13th, that's this Friday and Saturday, the American Cancer Society will be conducting its annual Relay for Life for the Palatine, Rolling Meadows, and the Bernice, and that's going to be at Plum Grove Junior High School, just like it was last year, and it begins at 6:00 p.m. on the Friday of the 12th and continues until 6:00 a.m. on June 13th. The residents around that area of Plum Grove Junior High should have received a letter that the American Cancer Society should have been distributing in that area. And then on Monday, June 15th, the Police Department will be participating in a national program called Coffee with a Cop. It will be at the Starbucks located at 1414 Gulf Road. There will be two times that you can actually go out there and the program is conducted, and it will be from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. And again, that's Monday, the 15th. Also on Monday, the 15th, we have the Flag Retirement Ceremony conducted by the Boy Scout Troop 168. That will commence at 7:00 p.m. at Kimball Hill Park, the fire pit that was actually recently built in that area. Anyone can bring flags to be retired or drop them off at City Hall, and we'll make sure that they actually get over to the event. Then, as I mentioned earlier in the meeting, obviously Friday, June 19th, the block party on Kirchhoff Road, it's the Cruise Nights, the Farmers and Food Market, and then the night actually finishes with a movie, and again, it's the Penguin movie with Jim Carrey. So again, it is at 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., and then obviously after 8:00 p.m., the movie will commence on that point in time. But again, as I mentioned, the block party will shut off parts of Kirchhoff Road between Meadows and Oriole. The next city-sponsored blood drive will be conducted on Thursday, June 25th, from 1:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. in the council chambers or in the ELC, we'll have to figure that one out, but probably in the ELC where we've been doing it for the last few times. Friday, June 26th, the 60th Anniversary Committee will be sponsoring an event called Wine Down by the Creek, not whining, but wine down by the creek, and there will be beer, wine, and food to purchase as you listen to two bands play in Kimball Hill Park. And the time of the event is from 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., but the music's actually going shut off about 10:00 p.m., so anybody in that area, you won't have to hear music until 11 o'clock. The other part is the Garden Club. In 2015, Garden Walk will be Sunday, June 28th, noon to 4:00 p.m. Tickets are on sale at the Community Center at 3705 Pheasant Drive or online at the Rolling Meadows Garden Club site. Friendly reminder that the city's Fourth of July Parade is scheduled for Saturday, July 4th, starting at 11:30. It's the alternate year, so now we are in Central to Owl to Kirchhoff, so just be aware that we do rotate between those two. And then the 8th Annual Duck Race will be held on Friday, August 7th. This year's race is still sponsored by the city's Environmental Committee Rotary Club of Rolling Meadows Rotary, the Rolling Meadows Park District Foundation, and it is still scheduled at the Nelson Sports Complex Pool at 7:00 p.m. $5 per duck, or you can purchase a quack pack at $5, or five ducks for $20. We do sell some of those tickets here at City Hall, and again, at the Park District, they have most of those others, and you can buy the night of, and again, that's Friday, August 7th. Reminder that if you do have a crime tip or information that may help the Rolling Meadows Police, please contact the Rolling Meadows Crime Stoppers at 1-847-590-7867, and that's 1-847-590-STOP. And again, reminder that the June E news and views can be found on the city website, and you can visit at www.citerrm.org, and again, click News and Views, and that would be in there. And again, we did send out, or the Police Department did send out, special events alerts for the June 19th, and the only other comment that I do want to mention is for the Saturday, July 4th, if you would like to participate, parade, float, bicycles, anything else, please go to our website and sign up. Our theme for this year is celebrating 60, and again, going with the 60th Anniversary Anniversary overall. going with the 60th Anniversary Anniversary overall. With that, that's items of interest for this time.
And as much as I hate to prolong a 16-item, community items of interest report, since this is the last one before the Flag Retirement Ceremony that the Boy Scouts conduct annually over at that Campbell Hill Park Fire Pit, Mr. Crumstock is correct in mentioning that it was redone not that long ago. And so anybody who's been going to this ceremony, as I have since they basically resurrected it, you might remember that it started back at the time when there were still wooden logs that you would sit around. Now, there's the nice brick, and there's the whole big fire pit that's all encased in whatever. The reason I point that out is because I feel it's important to point out, that was a Boy Scout Eagle Project that got that improvement to the fire pit. And so I think the Scouts, taking not just a one-off interest so that a guy can get an Eagle Project done, but to maintain a continuing interest in improving our community in that way, should definitely be commended. And I invite anybody to come along, as we invite the veterans at the Memorial Day stuff. The Scouts always love to have a bit of an audience there. Then we'll go to the purchase order disclosures over $2,500. Ms. Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are four purchase orders for city council review. Nothing further to note.
Then the final item under staff reports is the presentation of the committee, the whole agenda for next week. Mr. Crumstock?
Right now, it has seven items that are, most of them are prepared, but the 2014 CAFA will be presented. The auditors will be here for their annual talk about it and discussion about it. Obviously, as Alderman Diastis mentioned, the fire station will be back, and the discussion will continue. EAB Parkway Tree Removal and Replacement, we'll have another discussion about that. We do that at least annually, but sometimes it seems like we do it a little bit more. But again, we're working about 160-some-odd trees so far that we've designated for this year, but that's a rough number. Site-to-site communications, we'll be having a discussion on that. That's a little more IT. And then the 2016 Street Program Engineering Needs will be discussed. And then Streetlight Committee Update will be discussed. We actually had a meeting with ComEd, so we're able to give some additional information, and obviously, the committee met twice, but with that. And then obviously, the EAC will be back on the last item that we have prepared at this point in time.
Then are there matters not on the agenda this evening? Mr. Prina?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The one area is that we have the, well, the EAB that we're going to discuss next week. I would just ask Public Works to give us an update of where the status is in the project, because I do have some residents in my ward. Want to know where it's going, and, you know, some of them have been hit kind of hard, so I just thought I would signal to Fred, just, and if we need to discuss on the side, is what, are we halfway through the project, two-thirds of the way through the project? And I'm sure that's part of it, but I just wanted to signal that would be the information that we'd be looking for. Thank you.
Noted. Other matters, none on the agenda? Seeing none, it would be in order for a motion, therefore, to adjourn?
So moved.
It has been moved and seconded. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and the council stands adjourned.